I'm calling to order the June 24, 2024, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else recording? Seeing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
So we have a couple of public comments. I'm going to call Mr. John Lozon. Could you just, could you please provide your name and your address, please?
Yes, my name is John Lozon. I reside down at 10 Main Street, Auburn, Massachusetts. I was here six weeks ago, and I'm just here for some follow-up questions, comments, and concerns. First was the pollution in the mill behind my house. I was here in April, and I spoke about it. And two days later, I had a guy down there from the Water Department or the Water District, I'm not exactly sure, or something. And we went through the whole place. And like I said, he was pretty sure that there was no problem down there with the water. And I asked him if he wanted to test it with a test kit. And he said, no, no problem. That was the end of it. And I thought after that, I'm thinking just a test kit down there, one-time test down there, probably wouldn't be a bad idea just to see if it's polluted or not. And, you know, besides, I'm not going to rattle off all the people's names that died of cancer that grew up. And those are just the ones that are my age. I don't know what happened to the kids that grew up there before me or after me, you know? But I'll say one thing, it was 1992 or '93, there was a little boy walking behind my house in the swamp, walking through the swamp to end up down on, down by Oxford and Rockstill, street connecting down there. And he found a frog, and it was a very unique frog. It was a six-legged frog. And it wasn't the cool kind with three on its side. It was really distorted with four on one side and two on the other. And, you know, that's really not a good sign. That's right behind my house. This was about '92, '93. Oh, boy, his name was Brian Davis. Don't ask me how I still remember it, but I do. So hopefully, we can look into that. Has anything been done about that in the past six weeks?
That's something that's dealt with by the Water District, correct?
So the matter, we refer to the Auburn Water District, who you met with Mr. Lozon. You and I had a conversation about that. I think the testing of the water, not the residential water, but the water itself would probably be a DEP issue. We can find out from our local health department where those matters are reported to. So give me an opportunity to discuss it with our health director to see what would be the proper venue for you to file that.
Because I've been waiting six weeks. So if I come back in two, will you have an answer? Two weeks enough time?
When you brought the matter to this board at the last meeting, I immediately called the Auburn Water District and had someone go down there. So I don't know what discussion took place between you and he, but I know that's the way we addressed it.
No, this was, that was the very first meeting that I could, this is my third time coming here. The very first time, I complained about the pollution down there. And you sent a man from the Water District to my house. And we went down there and took a tour. And he said, you don't need to test it, and this and that. And I'm figuring, why not test it anyhow? How much can a test kit cost to test that water down there? It's not the drinking water I'm talking about. I'm talking about that filth that's been there for 200 years. It was an old mill. It's dye that saturated into the soil. I can't make this stuff up. It's our history.
I will find out the proper procedure on the testing from the Department of Public Health. They may have to refer the matter to the state, but we'll let you know.
Okay. Well, if I come back in two weeks, I'll ask. And if we still have no information, I'll wait. But, you know, that's, I think that's fair. Also, the paving of Main Street, I discussed that six weeks ago. You know, there were some potholes. They did throw some tire into the potholes. Of course, it's already washing out when the water goes down there because all the water washes down Main Street. It comes from every direction right down there. So that's, it's putting a Band-Aid on a shotgun wound, you know? That's, it hasn't been paved in over 50 years. I can go to the bottom, you can see it's been paved year after year. There's seven, eight layers, a tire right down there. The town was paving and paving and paving, then they stopped. I don't know if the town, if the Main Street ever went from a public road to a private road, but I don't think it did. So maybe we can get something done there as far as paving goes. Filling the potholes is nice. I mean, it's better than smashing your tire. But, you know, there's thousands, literally thousands of cracks and upheaval on that street. If you walk down there, you would see it. Okay, the police body cam's still on the bargaining table for the two different unions hashing it out for who's going to pay more? Last time I was here, you told me.
It's already been resolved, Mr. Lozon.
Oh, so they're wearing their body cams?
Yes.
All right, fair enough. Good, good. There's one, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was inquiring about the smashing grabs that happened May 12. I was here May 13, and you explained to me you didn't have enough time to gather the specifics on it. Do you have any more information on that?
That's a police department matter, Mr. Lozon. I would suggest you contact the police department. I don't want to breach any security that may have been involved in that situation.
Is it public, is it public, that information?
I believe there was information released by Auburn PD.
Okay, so you have information, you just can't tell me it?
I don't know what that information is.
Oh, I'd have to go to Auburn Police Department. So you have no more information on what happened?
I was updated on the situation, but in terms of police matters and procedures, that's an internal operation.
Oh, so you can't give me an update on the update you received? So I understand. I'm just looking for a little transparency and accountability here, that's all. It's the local government. You see, last week on Friday, something happened to me. I went to the bank, and I got paid. And you know who had nothing to do with it? Nobody up here. But when payday comes around for our public servants, it has everything to do with we, the people. Everybody in this room, including yourselves, all of us. So, you know, the transparency and accountability thing, it's time. I've been here for 58 years. I never come up here to rock the boat or anything. But once things start happening, now I got something to say, you know? I guess that's it for now, you know? If you don't stand for something, you fall for anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Second, we have Mr. Alan Rafferty sign up for public comment. Could you please come up, say your name and your address?
Alan Rafferty, 18 Paul Street. I am here tonight to recommend to the board not to reappoint Robert Tatro to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This morning, I filed my third open-meeting complaint against the ZBA. His reckless disregard of the law makes him unfit to be a member of a government board. He has already admitted that he committed a violation, and despite my recommendation for retraining in the law, he continues to allow the ZBA to violate state law. At a recent decision of the board, he voted to give a resident a special permit who had been proven to have been conducting a business in a resident's zone for years without a permit. Our bylaws don't even allow a special permit to be given for that type of business he was conducting. In addition, the resident needed a hazardous waste license and needed to maintain a log of disposal, neither of which exists. Despite the pleas of a retired handicapped nurse who complained of this illegal business activity, Mr. Tatro allowed non-abutters to testify in favor of a permit. Mr. Tatro even made a statement that because the nurse lived across the street and her property didn't touch his, she may not be technically an abutter. This was a statement so silly, it is laughable. Mr. Tatro recently came before the Select Board to ask the ZBA to be allowed to discontinue the use of hybrid remote-meeting process. The board stated that it was up to the ZBA to make that decision because the Select Board has no authority over the ZBA. But you do appoint the board, and you can choose not to reappoint. In addition, at the same recent select meeting, Mr. Tatro was allowed to discuss the open-meeting law complaints despite this not being posted on your agenda. This should have been stopped by the Select Chair. During Mr. Tatro's prattle, he stated that I may be a hacker and could be causing the technical difficulties that the ZBA has been having. However, it was stated by Ms. Coyle that the problem may have been happening to the poorly-installed cables near the podium that people were forced to stand on while testifying. I noticed the podium is no longer here. Now, I recently found out the board is going to reappoint Mr. Tatro because they are desperate to have anyone on the boards, and he is a member of the Auburn Democratic Committee, so it's who you know. If you do, and violations continue, I recommend, at least, that you stop running every complaint by the town attorney for his review because his fees are greater than the embarrassment and the fine that you would get if the complaints are upheld. Using the town's attorney is a waste of tax dollars and should be avoided. And then finally, on the motion that may be presented by Mr. Corrine to have the entire town go through open-meeting training, which I guess means that you're having problems, I completely endorse it. I think it's great that he's being proactive. But I would just say this, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Moving along, we have no community organizations this evening, no presentations or public hearings. We do have a departmental item. Joanna, would you like to come up?
Hi. I'm sorry, are we?
This is a stormwater IMA.
Okay, sorry about that. So the Town of Auburn has been a part of the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition ever since the creation of the coalition. And we have an IMA with the Town of Spencer currently that is still going to be valid through the fiscal year 25. Spencer is no longer able to continue being the fiscal lead, and the Town of Shrewsbury has stepped up, and they're going to be taking it over. So the amendment will, in effect, just change Spencer to Shrewsbury. Everything else will stay the same, but Shrewsbury will. So any of our fees or anything like that or our contracts would go through Shrewsbury.
Do board members have any questions? I do have a, at the end of this fiscal year, will there be another vote for the new agreement? Okay, correct. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in, could you amend your motion just to include what we're voting on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we vote to the amendment, vote approval of the amendment to the intermunicipal agreement, IMA for Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition to change the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Commission lead town from Spencer to Shrewsbury.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much. We have no communications, so we're moving along to 8A. Select for general items, committee reappointments. So we'll start with Finance Committee.
Sure. Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we reappoint members Edward Coleman, Patrick Jones, and George Graham for terms expiring on June 30, 2027.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I just ask one question before we jump to voting? Is it, again, forgive me, this is, I'm only one year and one month in, is it customary that the candidates, even for reappointment, do not appear for questioning or back-and-forth discussion? I thought last year, I remember, for reappointment, the candidates were here.
That was, that was when we reappointed a new member to finish a term.
I don't recall members coming in on reappointments.
Policy, as I recall, is when someone initially applies, we have the interview process. I don't recall anybody appearing before the board for reappointments.
So there is a motion. I do believe there was a second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
I'm going to abstain.
So we have some reappointments for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Can I ask a general question? I know we just heard public comment, but in instances where, is there a review of the committee? Are we seeking chair input into reappointments? Or, I don't know what the makeups of the boards are, but is there any process? Or is it just they agree to stay on, and there is no additional input? Or public, there isn't an ask for more public applicants?
The policy has been, we interview when people are new, and we have not, we have never re-advertized if someone has indicated a desire to be reappointed. We can certainly look at the policy going forward.
I just want to make sure, like, again, if there's something in place for, you know, again, we do serve the public. I just want to make sure that their input is listed. And I'm not saying all the issues are valid, but is there a process? And, I mean, I think I'd like to see some process around that, but I don't know what that entails.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, my concern is that, you know, there may be, again, I don't want to speak to the validity of the comments that we just heard recently. But with all candidates, I think there may be reasons why we'd want to ask them questions, you know? Things change over time. Somebody who was originally appointed 10 years ago might have differing views than this board at this point. And our board members change, you know, potentially every year. Our board rolls over. So I'm surprised that we don't at least have them come in and, you know, tell us that they're interested, why they're still interested in serving, and so that we can have a back-and-forth with them because they're here, they're in these positions for the next three years. You know, I certainly, you know, respect that. The history is that we do not do that, or we did not do that previously. But I could be wrong. When I remember reading the policy originally, there was, you know, reappointments as well. Had the opportunity for those candidates to come in the board, to talk to them, and also the chair of the board as well had the ability to sit in on that interview as well and ask questions. So I'm going to, I plan to abstain on all of these only because I think that, you know, I don't, I think that at the least, you know, there should be some process to review, to review their time on the board or commission and to get an understanding of their views, just as Mr. Chambers just stated.
I'm certainly not opposed to us revisiting the policy to request that. There's only one person that I know who didn't get reappointed in my time on the board, and I had nothing to do with the policy. The policy was in place. Most of our policies were in place before I was even elected to the board. So I do believe I have asked two separate boards for us to revisit them, and we haven't, we haven't gotten to them. But if members are concerned, and I certainly have no problem revisiting it, I know I have not gotten any complaints about either member. Mr. Cussie has been a member of the ZBA for the better part of 30 years at this point. He started as an alternate, and I have never heard a comment, positive, negative, or in-between. He always seems to be fair-minded. He always seems to be, you know, looking at the policy. You know, I don't know Mr. Tatro particularly well. I know he's been chair and enjoys the confidence of the board that he serves on. So, you know, as I say, I don't know him well. But I certainly am not in favor of not reappointing him at this particular moment in time. But I appreciate that the process could be revisited.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to clarify. My position has nothing to do with any of these candidates. It's my belief in the process that should take place.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we reappoint members Robert Tatro and Richard Cussie to the ZBA with terms expiring June 30, 2027.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
The chair is a yes as well.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that Associate Member Ryan Garabedian be reappointed with a term expiring June 30, 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstain.
The chair is a yes as well. The Board of Registers?
Yes, I've served with Ms. Nurse. She is a member of longstanding of the Republican Town Committee. She attends all the meetings. She has been, fills in when the last day of registrations, we usually, the registrars, at least when I was on the board, we used to have to take at least an hour or two. Now, I think she's a good appointment or reappointment to the board. So I'd make a motion that we reappoint Deborah Nurse as a member of the Board of Registrars to a term expiring June 30, 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstain.
The chair is a yes as well. We're moving along to 8B. We have no proclamations or recognitions. 8C, we do have some gift acceptances.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we accept a gift to the DPW Racun Culture Committee from Central One Federal Credit Union in the amount of $800 for the girls' basketball team's summer league and with a letter to be prepared for the chair's signature.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept a gift to the Summer Concert Series in the park in the amount of $1,000 from Savers Bank with a request that a letter be prepared for the chair's signature to be sent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Moving along to Section 9, Town Manager Items.
Madam Chair, this matter is a carryover from the last meeting. We are going to put up on the screen here a flowchart that currently depicts the fleet maintenance as a, is an activity under the SOU Department, under DPW. We are proposing a charter change. And you've been provided a preamble to amend the charter that would set fleet up as its own division under DPW. And we've had some discussions with the board for the better part of the last year. I think the board has a good understanding as to some of the issues we've been encountering as a result of the inefficiencies that result from this activity. We're trying to streamize it, make it more accountable, make it more efficient. And it would make its own division a much more workable product. So if you have any questions, we have Nick and Joanna to answer any additional questions you may have relative to the suggested change in the charter.
Do board members have any questions?
I have a question. Do we currently have a fleet maintenance superintendent? Or is that going to be a new position?
That would be a new position. It's in the future. It's not budgeted or anything like that. So we would, Nick's been doing a great job, you know, supervising the facility section. But in the future, we'd like to create that position with a little bit more expertise in the, more mechanical expertise that could stay in the garage and oversee that work.
Thank you.
Ideally, through the chair, ideally, every division has its own supervisor. It's not budgeted, it's not one of our budgeted items in FY '25, not knowing what the outcome of the reorg was going to be. Certainly, that would be a budget priority in future years. I don't know how soon we can get there. But it is something we would consider in the future.
Thank you.
I just have one, Madam Chair, if I may?
Absolutely.
I just have one question in terms of the effective date. So the agreement we have in front of us, it says that it should go into effect September 1, 2023, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen. Is this, are we approving this back to that date? Or is this?
I think that date was used in order for us to begin negotiations with the bargaining groups that this impacted. Yes, that date has been referenced to the unions before. So we would like that to be the effective date in this vote.
And does that have any ramifications in terms of the, when this new division is created, that employees are assigned to it, that they are going to be assigned, backdated to that date, to the September 1, 2023? And are they going to get back pay if they are?
No.
Receive a promotion or a new title? So it's not going to have any of those ramifications? I'm just trying to think. I don't want the slippery slope of?
No, the MOA, which is a separate document, is going to trigger those changes. So that would be post-July 1, or pretty, I think we try to line it up with the beginning of the fiscal year.
So our vote would have to indicate that we are voting it as of that past date?
That is correct.
And just a comment, I know that, you know, Mr. Fairbanks, Superintendent Fairbanks, does an excellent job, but please do not put one more division under him. I don't think that he can survive that.
He does a great job, but no. In the future, we would like to have somebody in the garage working with the guys.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
I move to amend Chapter 3, Department of Public Works of the Reorganization Plan approved in April 2011 to establish a fleet maintenance division in the Department of Public Works.
Is there a second?
Second, and can I just ask the friendly amendment that it's effective September 1, 2023?
Amend your motion.
Yes. I vote to amend Chapter 3, Department of Public Works of the Reorganization Plan approved in April 2011 to establish a fleet maintenance division in the Department of Public Works, and that would be effective to July 25, 2023.
I believe the preamble date is?
September 1, 2023.
September 1, 2023.
Okay. I amend it to September 1, 2023 as the date.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have no table items. We're moving along to number 11, member items. We previously discussed creating a working group to develop an LIP policy or procedure.
So, Madam Chair, just a brief update. I know these are member items, but we did reach out to CMRPC to see if we could gather any information that would be helpful in the creation and the formulation of this policy. They don't know of any community they deal with that currently has an existing policy. So that didn't pan out. So it looks like we're going to try to invent the wheel ourselves. So that didn't pan out, so it looks like we're going to try to invent the wheel ourselves. But I know we were supposed to bring you an update in July, but I at least wanted to provide that information once we found out about it, that we're not going to be able to gather any information from CMRPC.
That's funny, because Grafton has one. Grafton has a policy, Acton has a policy, which wouldn't be CMRPC, but Grafton has a policy, so, but that's fine.
Well, that's good to know. What, we will check with Grafton. I had Adam check with CMRPC and kind of shake the trees there, but he came up with nothing. But I will, when he gets back, I will have him reach out to his counterpart in Grafton and see what exists in that community.
No, that sounds good.
So in light of that information, would you like to hold this to the next meeting? Where we can?
Yeah, I thought we were holding it until the meeting in July anyways, because we were waiting, but thank you.
Sure. And so?
I do have some, that I have, that I can send to the manager. I have some samples, because I've been looking at it, so I can send them, and that can be distributed to the board members through the manager's office.
That would be helpful. Thank you, I appreciate that. I apologize, I, I was told that, that did not exist, but.
Okay, so moving along, we are on member item 11B. I will pass this along to you, Mr. Crane.
Thank you. So in my professional career, I've had to sit through over a dozen open meeting law trainings over the years. Pre-COVID, they were always done in person, sometimes done by the Attorney General's Office. Before that, they were actually done by the District Attorney's Office, before it transferred to the AG, or, or through town council for the town that I used to work in. Obviously, post-COVID, everything went to virtual, and they set up virtual trainings, and I, and I've done that now three times, two on my own, one, once upon being appointed to the planning board here by Town Manager Jacobson, and then once recently when I was a member of the Board of Selectmen. And some say I have no life, but I, I know other members of, of this board do the same thing. In order to stay up to date, I will watch other committee meetings that take place and other board meetings that take place in town. And I thought that when I got appointed to the planning board, the reason why there was no requirement to do a formal training was because it was the middle of COVID. I got appointed in September of 2020, and, and I chalked it up to, to COVID. But when I became a member of the select board, there was also no requirement that I go sit through a training for open meeting law. And I, I found it concerning, because as I watch these meetings, I, I see, you know, there, there's a, an apparent lack of understanding of the open meeting law. I know that when, when someone gets appointed or elected, they get the packet, and they attest that they did the training or they looked at it, but there's no formal actual training. There's no fact that they sat through the AG's training or anything along that lines. And I've heard, you know, I've, I've seen, quite frankly, board members of different boards and commissions take votes on things that are not on the agenda. I've heard them reference conversations that have happened outside of the meeting that where there are four issues that were on the agenda that shows that deliberation was taken place privately, which we all know. But I've also heard them reference, and I've heard staff as well, reference things that, yes, this is an open meeting law violation, don't discuss it, when it actually isn't an open meeting law violation. So I, I just think that, you know, there is certainly an increase in complaints being filed against boards and commissions over the last year, whether, you know, and I'm not going to comment on the validity of those, you know, the AG's office decides that, not us. But I think that when I went through our policy book, it certainly requires that if somebody does, you know, when they're appointed or, or elected, they, you know, apprise themselves of the open meeting law, and they're supposed to follow it, but there's no formal requirement. And I know that other municipalities have a formal requirement that when somebody gets appointed to a board or commission or is elected to a body that's under the open meeting law, they're required to either sit through that Attorney General's training, or the town will have a training for them that's either done in conjunction with the AG's office or, or their own town council. And I think it's, you know, to the point where I think we would be best served in, in the town, quite frankly, when it comes to ensuring compliance and ensuring transparency to look to, whether we as a board or the administration can install a policy that requires boards and committee members across the board, both elected and appointed, as well as staff who serve those boards, to undergo that AG training, whether we just use the Attorney General one that's online, you get a certificate that says, you actually don't get a certificate, you get an email saying, yeah, you completed it on this date as evidence of that, you know, you went through and you, you attended that meeting and you, you finished that. Or if it made more sense to look to do a series of trainings with the AG's office or town council, where we have, now that we're not in COVID, and we're doing in-person meetings again, to do a series of trainings for boards and commission members that way. But I just think it's an important issue when it comes to transparency in government, and, and quite frankly, when it comes to ensuring that we're all doing things in accordance with MGL, that we should look to find a way to put a policy in and then, or program in.
If I may, through the chair, I can tell you that town council provided training every other year to our board and committee members that actually took place in this room. I think the curveball we were dealt was COVID, of course, and that kind of sidetracked that. But be willing to resume that if you believe that would be helpful. I know Attorney Henigan does a great job, although we can't force people here, we can offer it, but it's not, it was never mandatory. So, you know, I, I think the participation was very solid, it was, it was well-attended. But I don't think those individuals were being tracked, and I believe they should be through the town clerk's office, so we know who's been provided the training, who's not. I think when you do it through a virtual, you get that certificate, which sometimes has to be presented to the town clerk, as evidence that you, you have taken the training, like some other things that are taken at the state level. But the piece that's missing is the compliance piece, the mandatory piece, and that's, that's missing. So I guess that's something we can take a look at. I don't know if that is done by a vote of the board or done by a recommendation of the town manager, that's something we can take a look at. But we can resume those meetings and, and, and provide for one, probably not, probably in the fall when people are back from vacation, no be difficult, but I think we can line that up if, if that's a desire of the board. And I, I would recommend that.
Through the chair, I, I guess we can't require it, but as a condition of reappointment, would the board support something about making sure the training's up to date? And again, we, we can't force the hand, but we can fix the problem going forward, unless, again, I don't know if it's our authority to require it. I don't know if we're allowed to require or backdate requirements, but going forward, is there a way we can adopt a policy that their training be up to date?
You know, here's a difficulty. Someone may have taken it five years ago, and certainly, things, things change, and what's the frequency of the certification of the training? Is it required every time we hold it? Is it required once every five years, or?
So I mean, I, I shouldn't just speak for my experience with a, a different municipality. They were requiring a pre-COVID every other year, because there were changes, there were, and it wasn't necessarily changes to the law, it was changes in interpretation of the law. As, as, you know, issues were brought before the AG's office, then it would be interpreted a different way, and then that would become a new, a, a new way to, to read the law, or something would be encompassed now that didn't previously encompass it. But I also think that, you know, it's probably going to be, you know, as I look through stuff, it's probably going to be a combination. I don't know, you know, I think the select board can impose it for the boards and commissions that we appoint. I don't think we have the authority under the charter to impose it on other boards and commissions that are appointed by the town manager, so that'd be, have to be most likely an act of the town manager, but I think this is something that town council will have to look at the charter and determine how we reach all of the various boards and commissions. Obviously, the, the staff is an easier situation where the town manager can, can require it of staff, but, you know, it might be where you, we hold it in person, and some people like in-person better, but for those that aren't in attendance and in person, you then require them to do the AG one instead, and, and you give them the flexibility whether they can come or not.
Yeah, I think they need that option, because if we hold it on one night, once a year, some people are not able to make that night. So we could hold, you know, a couple of times during the year to offer that flexibility, but certainly, they would have the ability to do it virtually or online through the AG's office or whoever provides that training.
Would, would that training be something that could get recorded and people could watch or view if they can't make that meeting and certify that they viewed it?
Well, I think the beauty of having it here is it can be taped by Chris, and we can make that available to any newcomer. So yeah, that, that's a great idea.
And, and I think having in-person with town council involved as well, there may be more questions that come up rather than the AG's online training where it's not the question and answer thing. And, and I think some of that nuance is, most of the time when people go through training, they try to relate back to the board or commission they're on. So if there are members of the board or commission in there, they can have real life.
That is the beauty of holding it in-person with town council, because a lot of board and committee members are going to bring their own experience to that meeting, and there may be areas of gray that they need to further define. So I, I like that aspect of it. The virtually, you're not going to be able to get that and have that Q and A period. So I like the mix of both, and we're, we're willing to resume at least the in-person training through town council here, and we can do that as early as this fall.
Question for Mr. Crane, actually. You mentioned the town that you previously were employed by would do the training, and that would be for department or committee chairs and for committee members?
That was for staff that staff those committees, as well as all committee members or, obviously, chairs, but all committee members were, were required to attend.
So what were the repercussions if a committee member didn't attend?
So when they came before appointment, the select board or their appointing authority would ask them, are you up to date on your open meeting law training? And have you done your required training? And they would actually already know the answer to the question when they asked it.
Would they not get reappointed?
There were some cases where they either didn't reappoint them, or they required them to do the training within a certain amount of months of being reappointed.
Thank you.
A question to Mr. Crane. Was there attendance taken, or was that information provided to the town clerk or to the town manager?
No, there was attendance taken. So the trainings were done generally in conjunction with either, there was a representative from the town council's office, as well as a representative from the AG's office that did the training. You had to sign in when you got there. You signed in that you were, that you were there and you attended.
So they satisfy that requirement just by sitting in the seat and listening, so?
Yeah, they attended the training.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions and comments? Moving along, we have minutes in our packet from May 13th. Are there any corrections or changes or questions? Paled, accept them as read. We would just need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, before I make that motion, can I just make a comment? We had a gentleman here under public comment, and this has happened periodically throughout my time on the board, and I am a member of the Auburn Town Democratic Committee. When I sit here, I don't sit here as a Democrat. I've gotten along with Republican members who are conservative, who are members and have run for state office as a Republican. I've gotten along with them at times much easier than my Democratic Town Committee colleagues that I've served with. So I'm hoping that as we move forward, we stop trying to create an atmosphere of partisanship that because Mr. Tetro or anybody else might be a member of a committee, I don't go to the town clerk and, and ask, is someone on the Republican Town Committee, nor would I be interested? I don't know what anybody's, well, I know a couple of you because you serve on the town committee, but other than that, I don't inquire of it, but if we didn't go to the same meeting, it would never come up in conversation. So I just think that there seems to be this desire to create this air of partisanship, especially directed at Democrats, as if being a Democrat is some sort of odd choice in life. And sometimes when I hear some of our elected leaders, I do think it might be an odd choice for me anyways, but, you know, all of us who sit here don't sit here as party officials. We sit here as members of the community, and it, it just doesn't need to constantly be brought up that there are members who happen to be Democrats on this committee. And again, I've served with members of the Republican Town Committee on this committee, and we got along just fine, because we don't talk about things or look at things as Democrats or Republicans. We look at them as residents of the town of Auburn, who we ask to be on this board. We have all been elected by all the people in Auburn. So I just would ask people when they come through not make partisan shots, that frankly, I have not found any merit in them, that we've done anything. Any member of the board that I've served with have done so as, because of their party affiliation or lack thereof.
Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.